First thing I'd like to do is just make sure it's noted, Chair Finley Rathaus is excused for the evening. Okay, announcements. Unfortunately, I'm going to be doing a lot of reading tonight, so. And this is only the beginning. Okay. Town offices will be closed on Monday, February 20th, for the observance of President's Day. Upcoming town council meetings, Thursday, February 23rd at 7:00 PM. Thursday, March 9th at 7:00 PM. And Thursday, March 23rd at 7:00 PM. Important dates to remember. Wednesday, February 22nd through Friday, March 3rd at 5:00 PM. Filing period for town offices to be elected at the town meeting on April 11th, 2023. Wednesday, March 15th at 7:00 PM. In the all-purpose room at James Mastercola Upper Elementary School. Located at 26 Babusick Lake Road is a deliberative session. Okay, the comments from the, do I do announcements with you first?
Yeah, I just have one, Madam Chair. Thank you. Parks and Rec Department invites you to join them on Saturday, February 25th, for the 31st Annual Winter Carnival at Wasserman Park from 12 to 3:00 PM. Despite the lack of snow on the ground, we have 26 groups providing free games, crafts, raffles, and other activities. We're anticipating a special appearance by MAC, the Police Comfort Dog, as well as Oscar Meyer Wienermobile. Food will be available for purchase during the event. If you have any questions, please contact Parks and Recreation at 603-882-1046, or you can go to their website at Merrimack Parks, with an S, End Recreation, N-Rac.org. That's Merrimack Parks, N-Rac.org. Thank you.
Comments from the press and public? The crowd, okay. Recognitions, resignations, and retirements, none. Appointments, none. Okay, public hearings. This is much of what's going on this evening. First is a public hearing, consideration of changes to Chapter 178 Taxation. Article 5, Optional Veterans Credit of the Merrimack Town Code. The town council will hold a public hearing to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to Chapter 178 taxation. Okay, first of all, I will open the council, the public hearing at 7:03. See if there's any public comment. And as they rush to make it come up.
Why they rush the microphone? Basically, this, what we're changing is Article 5 of the Optional Veterans Tax Credit. The legislation last year voted some additional language, and it's, the additional language is to include eligible active-duty veterans. We included that in our optional tax credit. And the other reason why is that if the council did not take this up, the veteran credit would go back to $50, but by re-adopting this section of the ordinance, 178, the 500 will stay in place now. Which was voted on prior by the residents of Merrimack.
I apologize, I should have been on, go ahead. Okay, not seeing any public. Now does the council, I'm going to close at 7:04. Council have questions or recommendations, or? Okay, so. Andy Hunter is going to recuse himself. You can sit, I don't think there's any reason. Sometimes when he recues, people want to be able to move, but I don't feel the need for you to move. Unless anyone else feels the same way. Yes?
Just a question, do veterans have to reapply for the credit every year? Or once they apply, they applied and it's good?
Once they get approved with their DD-214 and Honorable Discharge Paperwork, it's in effect. And then even after they pass, their spouse gets the credit as well until their spouse passes. So no, they don't have to reapply every year.
So, so what's the definition of an active-duty veteran? He's been discharged, but he's working again?
That was to incorporate this optional credit for members who are in the National Guard that called up to active duty. That's really what the active duty was for, because National Guard members do not get a veteran credit.
Okay.
Barbara?
And there are, that stopped me for a while too, because I was like cogitating on that, but I do know people who have discharged from one branch of the service and re-enlisted in a different branch of the service. So technically, yeah, they're a veteran, and now, but they're still on active duty in a different branch.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, entertain a motion to move to consent agenda?
Move. I move the, what is it, Chapter 178 changes to the third reading consent agenda.
Right.
Second.
Made by Tom, seconded by Barbara. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so there's five. And any against and abstaining, one. Andy. Oh, just recuse. Okay, so you just listed as recuse. Okay, so it's 5-0-0, Andy Hunter recusing himself, okay. Well, this is stat not really well. Okay, number two in the public hearing. Mill foil grant funds for Horseshoe and Natticoop Lake. Submitted by Planning and Zoning Board Administrator Robert Price, but we have the big boss here, Jim Johnson. The town council will hold a public hearing to authorize the acceptance and expenditure of up to $18,580 for the mill foil treatment program at Horseshoe Pond in Natticoop Lake, of which $9,290 is from a grant from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for mill foil control, and the town's matching share is $9,290 to be funded from the Mill Foil Expendable Capital Reserve Fund and to authorize the town manager or his designee to execute any and all documents which may be necessary pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 18-15. And I'm assuming, Paul, should we just go you or Tim?
Well, we can push right off to Tim, but for, for people at home, we get this every year. This is one of those grants that comes back. It's nice to see, it's nice to see the funding going back to 50%, 50% because it used to be 40% state, 60% in town. So it's nice to see that they're stepping up to the plate and paying a little more of the share. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, members of the council. This, as Paul mentioned, is a yearly process. DES works with Robert and the staff in my department to go through the grant process. Now with the Mill Foil Expendable Capital Reserve Fund, it really has become almost a, an automatic process. The proposal for this year is for diver-assisted suction harvesting, as it was for last year, and DES is going to cover 50% of those costs.
So. Okay. Why don't we open up for discussion first? Tom?
Well, I was just going to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
I move to accept and authorize.
Wait a minute, we did do a public hearing.
This, this is a public hearing?
Yeah.
Sorry, never mind.
You were just testing me.
You caught me.
No, I caught myself amazingly. Okay, any discussion though? None. Okay. Now I will open up the public hearing at 7:09. I will make a comment. A lot of times we've had the public come and make comments about how effective and how active they are in their involvement at Horseshoe.
The volunteers at both of those bodies of water are excellent. Very, very great people that assist the, the company.
That's what makes it so effective.
Exactly.
Okay, so I'll close the public hearing at 7:10. Now I'll. Intertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move to accept and authorize the expenditure of up to $18,580 for the mill foil treatment program at Horseshoe Pond in Natticoop Lake, of which $9,290 is from a grant from NHDES for mill foil control, and the, and the town's matching share is $9,290 to be funded from the Mill Foil Expendable Capital Reserve Fund. And furthermore, the town council authorizes the town manager or his designee to execute any and all documents which may be necessary.
Second.
Motion made by Tom Koenig, seconded by Barbara Healy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? None. 6-0-0. Thank you, Tim. Okay, the next, there are several things to be discussed, warrant articles and the operating budget. How we're going to do, we're going to deal it, deal with it individually. So we're going to do one at a time. And after each one, there'll be a motion. Unless it's, we'll have discussion on any changes. And after all that, a motion will be entertained to move to the warrant. Okay, so we'll do those on an individual basis, okay? Okay, so the first one. Again, this is public hearing, we have to remember. Public hearing, proposed municipal 2324 operating budget and warrant articles. Town council will hold a public hearing to discuss the following. The first is the 2324 Proposed Municipal Operating Budget. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Justin's coming out in a second, and it will populate on your screens. It is on our screens. I gave you this handout so you can keep it in your budget books. It's right there for you, Madam Chair. So, so this is your backup for your budget book. So I come tonight during the budget, public hearing, to discuss the Merrimack Town Council budget. It becomes the Merrimack Council budget from the last meeting that we had when you moved all the money forward. It's your budget moving to the warrant and deliberative session from this point. Summary of the budget is an increase of roughly 16 cents on the tax rate. About a $900,000 increase to taxes. It's about a 4.19% increase in the tax rate. Broken down further. Appropriations, there are several different groups of appropriations. General Fund Operating, Capital Reserve Funds, Other Capital, excuse me, Road Infrastructure and Sidewalks Expansion. Safer Grant, Wastewater, and Self-Supporting. Safer Grant, Wastewater, and Self-Supporting are just that, they offset one another. The ones above, if you add the, and we're, we're talking about the General Fund Operating, Capital Reserve Fund Deposits, Other Capital, and Road Infrastructure. That's about a $2,334,945% increase, or 7.1%. We've also, it increases in revenue of $1,439,962, or 10.5%. Overlay, tax overlay for abatement is an increase of about $17,000 of 5.26%. $912,476, or 4.7% total increase to the amount to be raised by taxes. Tax rate, however, is about 4.19% increase, or 16% for the budget article. Some of the appropriations that have increased. Computer supplies went up about $45,000. Street sweeping, 16. General Insurance, 11. The big ones are solid waste tipping fees, recycling went up 52,500. Disposal went up 20,000, 20,500. We're in two contracts with both of those, and those were, the recycling was inflationary and what the contract was for the second year, total is $73,000. Vehicle fuel, as we all know, vehicle gas prices have gone up. It's 99,500 from where we were. Some telephone maintenance items, 35, and office maintenance items of 37,000. For staffing and, staffing and personnel-related expenses. Health insurance went up 232,000. We still have, working on a guaranteed maximum rate. We won't get our final rate till probably the end of March, I was told. And it looks like we're going to be right around that number. Compensated absence went down at $100,000. Union wages for the three unions that are in contract went up 188,000. New Hampshire Retirement System had a reduction in its rate that went down 177,000. Some uniform costs associated with these contracts and union employees went up 16,000. Additional for the Safer Grant went up $6,918 for this year. We got a COSAP grant for the police department, which is $110,000. Deputy Director of Environmental Position Upgrade of $40,000. That's the difference from where, when we reclassified that environmental position to the Deputy Director of DPW. Overtime for Fire and Police went up about 44,000. We had some reductions. We reduced a full-time detective secretary position through software acquisition that eliminated that position of 71,000. Town clerk tax collector reduced a full-time position for about 64,000. And nine-union raises were about 186,000. That's nine-union raises and incentives and a little bit of, we have to look at salaries for the nine-union individuals for positions that are available. So that's all included there. Comes to 784,871 increase. We also had some savings. Debt service for drainage, 166,586. Library materials went down 22,000. Fourth of July went down 10,000. That's because the rotary came back. And they are, they are stretched really thin again this year. So they're not going to be doing the midway, so there will not be a midway. And then some operating supplies decreased, net savings of 210,086. Total increase to General Fund, 574,785. That number ties to the, where is it? First line, if you look at General Fund Operating, 567, 867. And you add in the Safer Grant to 6,0918, you add those two together. They come up to the 574,785 increase. Continuing on, increased cost is only half the story with the budget. Even though the voters don't vote on the revenue in April. When we look at our budget, it's, it's an all-inclusive budget, include revenues. We had some increases to revenues this year. As I told you about solid waste, solid waste revenue also went up 190,800. And that is reflected in the rates that we do charge commercial vendors for bringing of materials to the town, to the town transfer station. Interest income, interest rates are on the rise, $261,000. The COSAP grant that we talked about, offset by the police department expense of 110. Charges for services went up 69,150. Restaurant licenses, we, we are following the state, the state proves what the restaurant fee license amounts are, and that's $17,000. We had some miscellaneous income, you know, ebbs and flows of 46,000. Some decreases though were current use taxes of 50, building permits of 64,500. State revenue sharing for New Hampshire Retirement. Last year, they gave us a one-time, even though it's being talked about in the budget right now, we do not know if we're going to get it or not. But they gave us a one-time reduction in police and fire. They helped us with the police and fire retirement costs for the town to the tune of 181, 260. Net revenue increases is 398, 544. Safer Grant, like I said before, was an increase of $6,918. We used some fund balance this year in the amount of $2,384,500. $984,500 was used to reduce taxes. The $1.4 million was used for the fuel distribution system that we talked about at Highway Garage. So there's an offsetting revenue for that capital expenditure. Overall, we increased fund balance, use of fund balance, $1,034,500. As you can see from prior year, the $2,384,500 minus the, what we have in this current budget that we're in right now of $1,350,000. So it's an increase of $1,034,000. Excuse me. Other highlights are some, the capital that we talked about. We talked about a town hall sprinkler system, and that is not for outdoor watering. That is actually for fire suppression. And the amount to $150,000, we talked about that, that our system is getting older, it's showing its age. It's having, we're having more and more leaks and more and more repairs. Church parking lot of 92,424. We also, that also is for the church across the street. It's part of our lease agreement with them, however, they are paying about $50,000 of that. So really, the net cost to the town is about 40, $49,000, 42 to 49,000. Community development is not buying a plan file cabinet. Communications, 800 megahertz system, we put money into 2223 budget. We're not putting that forward again of $762,000. There's the highway fuel distribution of 1.4 million. A brine storage tank, that's so that we use less salt in, in some areas of town where there are wellhead protections. We need a, a tank to store the brine, that's 25,000. We had a base radio at the Highway Garage for their communications of $28,000 that would not buy in again this year. When I talk, say this year, it's 2324 versus the current fiscal year is 2223. We talked about an office trailer at Wastewater. The side by the scale is starting to rot. And then we're not doing Parks and Rec roofs for 32,000. And we talked about some police vehicle outfits and the cost of police vehicles of 28,500.
Well, I just wanted to go back to the, the church parking lot and just make it very clear to people that we're not paving the lot for the church. We're paving the lot for our use at the Adult Community Center as part of our lease agreement with the church. And the church, as you pointed out, is paying the majority of that amount, but we have to gross budget the whole amount. So we're only paying about 40 something thousand.
Right, I think it's like 46,000.
Yeah. Just, just so nobody thinks that we're going around and paving the church parking lot for them or something like that.
No.
This is a, definitely a business deal with them.
Yep. Thank, thank you for clarifying that, Councilor Koenig. Yes, this is a lease agreement that we have with them for parking for the Adult Community Center. And that's what we're looking at restoring and paving as part of the lease agreement. So, other capital is an increase of 960,000. Road infrastructure, that's our paving budget, is increasing $800,000 in fiscal year 2324. That is all that I have on the budget. I'll be more than happy to answer questions.
Questions from the council? And we open the public hearing at 7:22. Thank you for. Whoop, I don't have it on. Okay, why don't I, let it move, so let me close the public hearing at 7:23. I will entertain a motion.
I move an amount of $38,791,564 for the operating budget to the town warrant.
Motion made by Tom Koenig, seconded by Lon Woods. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
On a affirmative, so that's 6-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you. And I forgot to mention, department heads are here. They're in full support of this budget that's being presented to the town from the town council. They're here to show that they are in support of it, so. And they were here to answer any questions, but I forgot to say that at the beginning.
Thank you, and I appreciate you said that. And I just want to make a point is that I made a decision, they didn't have to be here.
But they wanted to come.
And they wanted to come, so I appreciate it even more, since you didn't have to and you still showed up. Well, it is their budget, but it also says a lot that they're supporting it, so. We appreciate that, thank you. Okay, so we can go on to the next one.
Next one, yep.
The next public hearing is collective bargaining agreements. Should we do each one of those individually as well?
Yep, yes, please.
Okay. The first is the International Association of Firefighters, IAFF Local 2904. And Paul, go right ahead.
First I want to say is that we're presenting this information as that an informational presentation for the public. Union contracts, once they're agreed to and ratified by both sides, the, the union and the town council move automatically to the warrant, and actually to the ballot. They cannot really be changed because it's a agreed contract, and the people, the people have to vote on what was agreed to by the council and by the union. But we want to get it out there to show what the council has ratified. So, IAFF 2904 has 36 members. We settled on a three-year deal totaling $361,768. The first year includes a three-year wage increase. Plus, we added the EMT, AMT, Paracert, firefighter two, and longevity into the base pay of the, the position, and added a 10-cent adjustment to bring them closer to the average of surrounding communities, of similar size. In year two, it's a straight 3% wage increase. In year three, it's a straight 3% wage increase. We also had a couple of other items that we talked about. That we increased some uniform items in paragraph five and eight and reduced the prorated allowance for, for probationary employee from $70 per month to $50 per month. We did, Article, paragraph five and eight are summarized in the bullet below. It's some additions and subtractions to uniform items issued by firefight, to firefighters and paramedics when hired. That could be uniform pants, that could be shirts, that could be t-shirts, winter coat, things of that sort. We had it very specific that, for instance, they can only have two pairs of pants. Well, these guys are in probation, they're training, the pants get wet. They go, they have the second pair of pants, they get wet again. Now they don't have another pair of pants to wear. So we increased that allotment for pants. The other, the same thing with shirts, because they're training and they're learning the equipment and things of that sort. We, we gave them an additional shirt allotment for like t-shirts and things of that sort. But on the other side, the union came, and when we talked about it, said, we're going to reduce the monthly because you're giving us more upfront. So we don't have to spend it to buy those pants and things of that sort. The other thing is paragraph three of the insurance line, life insurance. We're trying to standardize life insurance throughout town. Increased benefits to one-time salary for employees, 10,000 for spells, 5,000 for children. From 10,000 unemployed, 1,000 from a spouse, and 500, or $100 for a child under six months. So we're trying to standardize that across the board. Costing is a 3% wage increase plus benefits, comes to $93,796 in year one. Year two, year one costing for the 10 cents enrolling all those certificates and incentives into it was $32,723. Overtime was a $13,598. Steps, because this union contract has steps, was 14,300. Totalling year one's 154,367, or roughly 3 cents on the tax rate. Year two of the contract is 97,000 for the 3% increase. Steps is another 9,500, for a total of 106,788, which is 2, 2 cents on the tax rate. Year three is 100,613. Right now, with the current employees and the current staffing they have, there will not be any steps. And the cost is 100,613. For a total, three-year total contract, the 361,768, or roughly 7 cents over those three years on the tax rate. That is all I have.
I'm sorry.
Open the public hearing.
Yep. I was just about to. Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:28. We should have music while we wait a couple of moments. Okay, seeing nothing. I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:29. What's the pleasure of the council?
Like to make a motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, I move to, to move $154,367 for collective bargaining agreement between the town and the IAFF contract to the town warrant.
Motion made by Barbara Healy, seconded by Andy Hunter. Thank you.
Paul, we're just moving the cost number for the.
For the one year to the warrant.
For the one year.
Because that's really.
We're moving the entire contract to the warrant, aren't we?
Yeah, we, we moved the entire contract, but we have to move the cost item because the voters are voting on that first. voters are voting on that first year of the cost. We have to show them by RSA what the additional cost of the contract is in that warrant article. But really, what we're looking for when we write the warrant is to raise and appropriate a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, three sixty-seven for this union agreement, to increase the thirty-four, thirty-eight million, seven ninety-one.
But the three years will be presented.
It has to be, it will be presented.
It will be presented on the...
On the warrant, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any further questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Six, zero, zero. Okay, next, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ninety-eight, local thirty-six, fifty-seven. Paul?
Thank you. This contract is with the ASME, ninety-three, local thirty-six, fifty-seven. This, this union is the police and fire supervisors. It has sixteen members in this bargaining unit. We reached a four-year deal totaling three-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-six. In the first year, it's a three, three, three percent wage increase, with a two-dollar-per-hour adjustment to move employees in this bargain agreement closer to the average of comparable communities. We also incorporated paramedic stipend into the base rate for fire captains and lieutenants, similar to what the local firefighter union has. In year two, we did a three percent wage adjustment, a three percent wage increase, sorry, with a dollar fifty per hour adjustment for fire captains, once again, to move them closer to the average of comparable communities. In year three, it was a three percent wage increase with a dollar per hour adjustment for fire captains, and a fifty cent adjustment for police captains and lieutenants to move those employees closer towards the average of comparable communities. And in year four, it's just a straight three percent wage adjustment. When we started to negotiate with this union, this union, we found that our fire captains were underpaid compared to other communities comparable size. So that is why we're doing these adjustments. We're trying to get these people more towards the average. And working with this union, the union understood the high end and low end, and they, they understand the tax rate implications, and they were comfortable with moving over a number of years and not wanting to be at the average in the first year, but being close to the average by year three, year four. And this accomplishes that goal. Really, there was no other contractual items. We just really talked about wages in this to move forward. In year one, the three percent wage increase is fifty-five thousand, six sixty-three. The wage adjustment, that two-dollar wage adjustment was ninety-two thousand, seven fifteen. Total overtime and benefits were five thousand, five hundred and sixty-three. In the first year, a hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, nine forty-one total cost, and that's about three percent on the tax rate. Sorry, it says year one again, it should say year two. A three percent wage increase is fifty-seven, eight eighty. Wage adjustment and benefits is eighteen, one seventy-nine, for a total of seventy-six, oh fifty-nine. Year three is sixty thousand, two thirty-two. Wage adjustments and benefits is twenty thousand, five twenty-five, for eighty thousand, seven fifty-seven. And year four, straight wage adjustment of three percent is sixty-two, oh thirty-nine. Total contract is three-hundred-and-seventy-two, seven ninety-six. Nine cent increase overall for those four years.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing at seven-thirty-three. Okay, saying none, let's move a minute. Close at seven-thirty-four. Counsel, yes, Andy?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move a hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars for collective bargaining agreement between the town and ASFCE thirty-six, fifty-seven to the town warrant.
Second.
Motion made by Andy Hunter, second by Lon Woods. Any other questions or recommendations? Saying none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Six, zero, zero. Okay, the next item, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSCME ninety-three, local two-nine-eight-six. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This member is the DPW Laborers of Highway Solid Waste Equipment Maintenance in Wastewater. Two-nine-eight-six has forty members. It's, we came to agreement on a three-year deal totaling three-hundred-and-seventy-five, three twenty-nine. When negotiating this contract, there were a couple items that really we needed to adjust. One was adjusting the pay scale. As you know, we were, we were down five highway equipment operator ones in, over at the highway garage. And during some of our interviews and people were inquiring about the position, the first thing they looked at was the wages. And in looking at our wages, we saw that our pay scale was definitely on the low, when the hire was on the low side. So, we came to an agreement to slide the pay scale two steps, and add two and a half percent between year ten and fifteen-year employees. And between year fifteen and twenty-year employees, the top two steps, we put, we made at two percent difference, so that there's a progression of two percent as you move up from year ten, a ten-year employee to a fifteen-year employee, and a fifteen-year employee to a twenty. By sliding the scale in the first year, those two steps, it gets us almost to where we needed to be, kind of like the same agreement that we had with the previous union. This union, we came to an agreement that we're being underpaid a little bit. We can't get you all there in the first year, but we'll get you there over the life of the contract. So in year two, we're sliding that pay scale, we're taking that bottom step and moving it out, and moving every one of the steps down one. But between, and between years fifteen and twenty, it's a three percent gap from those, those two years, and then a three percent wage increase, and then in year three, a three percent wage increase. We also added a new classification for our equipment operator threes at Wastewater, a sewer crew, and we added fifty cents to the equipment operator three pay scale. The reason why we added this position is that the gentlemen who are on the sewer crew need special certifications to be able to run our camera system that we have. So, by doing that, and there's some computer work, that's a little more intricate than just being a regular equipment operator three. Hours of work and overtime, it was a clarification of hours of work and overtime with this union. Basically, we agreed to, outside the normal work schedule, they'll get overtime, and, but there's no piramiding for overtime if a holiday or things of that sort. Cleaning up some language. Wastewater on call, we added this language. Any new employee hired after February first... Oh, wait, sorry, wrong one. We added language for employees shall be paid two times if they're on call, that's what it was. Two times their hourly rate if they're on call on an observed holiday. Because these people, if their family goes away to their in-laws' house, and it's more than X amount of miles away, they actually have to stay home in case they get called in during a holiday. So it was to say thank you and for being on call on holidays, and in trying to help satisfy the, the lack of family getting together on a holiday. And then we, this is what I was talking about, we required, we required that all new hires and those promoted or transferred into Wastewater positions need to be put on the on-call schedule as of February first, two thousand and twenty-three, as part of the rotation. Right now, it's voluntary for this group, but we're trying to get more of these twenty-nine, eighty-six members to get on the on-call schedule, so that you're not on call every three or four weeks. When these gentlemen come in, we'll start being on call every six, eight, ten weeks, to give a little bit more time, because you're on call for seven days in a row, and that includes weekends. So, for that period, you're on call, and, you know, you get called, and it was, it's getting better with our thirty-two million dollar upgrade, but we still have some very old equipment that we're still replacing. So, they break down during the middle of the night, they get called, they got to come in to fix it. With our newer systems, there will be a lot more computer stuff that they could do at home. And like I said before, we're trying to get the life insurance benefit all to the same, so we're changing them as well to one-time salary plus ten thousand for spouse and five thousand for child, from ten thousand employee, one thousand spouse, five hundred, one hundred for children. And then, once again, the vacations, we amended the language in the contract to state that newly hired employees eligible for vacation as successful completion of a six-month probationary period. The town of Merrimack has a six-month probationary period. We're just trying to get everybody on the same benefit package and one benefit start. So, they were a year. And that was the other thing, when we're trying to hire positions, we heard, "I don't get a vacation for a year?" Really? So we went with what the rest of the language, six-month probationary period. And then we increased their clothing allowance from three hundred, from two-seventy-five to three hundred dollars. Cost in the first year to move the two steps is a hundred and nine thousand, nine sixty-three. Because this union is without a contract in the current fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three, we have to now place everybody who's supposed to get a step this year that did not get a step on the step they're at, going to be at. So that's another fifty thousand, one ninety-two, in year one. Equipment operator three benefits was twenty-five, nine, twenty-five, ninety-three, for a total of a hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, four seventy-eight, or roughly three cents on the tax rate. Three percent wage increase, and moving that one step is a hundred and thirty thousand, one sixty-seven in year two, that's the total cost as well. And in year three, three percent wage increase, flat, is eighty-two, four one four. Total three-year of this contract is three seventy-five, excuse me, three twenty-nine, or roughly seven cents on the tax rate.
You're okay?
Yeah.
You all done, Paul?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to open the public hearing at seven forty-two. Okay. It's not going to be a full minute, but I'm going to say, close the public hearing at seven forty-three. Okay, any discussion?
Thank you.
Yes, Nancy?
All right, so I'm going to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'd like to move a hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars for collective bargaining in agreement, excuse me, for collective bargaining agreement between the town and AFSCME two-six-eight-nine to the town warrant.
I just want to correct that, the number. It was written down incorrectly, so...
Yes, yes.
Two-nine-eight-six.
Yes.
AFSCME two-nine-eight-six to the town warrant.
There you go. Motion made by Nancy Murphy, second by Tom Koenig. Any other discussion? None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? None. Okay, six, zero, zero. I'd just like to make a personal comment to the, all of the unions, that I appreciate the negotiations that went on. I think part of what the public needs to know is that there was an acknowledgement that some of the positions, it's competitive, it's that kind of, it's a prize to no one, that having public employment and private employment, there's that tension between the two, and also between towns, how much you firefighters, police get paid. So, there was an acknowledgement that we were lower than the, than the average, and that's what a lot of the negotiations was about. And I think the union appreciated, appreciated us acknowledging that, and did that modification based on it. So I think it was a very fairly negotiated contract on both sides, and I really want to express my appreciation to the unions for that. And that's what these contracts, and it was give and take along the way. And we did, they do not, they're not at the top, and they're certainly not at the bottom, but we wanted to make sure there was an acknowledgement, so we want to thank you for that. Okay?
Okay.
Hopefully, you will give a positive consideration on voting. Okay, next, capital reserve deposits, general fund.
As, as you know, in years past, this changed maybe three or four years ago, where our capital reserve funds have to be voted on separately from the operating budget. This year, I am not proposing any increases to the capital reserves in light of the economic factors that we were hearing at the time. So, we're asking for one million, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for general fund, capital reserve deposits. They include a liability trust fund, ambulances, communication equipment, computer equipment, Daniel Webster Highway, fire equipment, highway equipment, library buildings maintenance fund, property revaluation account, solid waste disposal, traffic light preemption device, GIS, road infrastructure, athletic fields, and milfoil, for an amount of one million, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty.
Okay, I'd like you to open the public hearing at seven forty-five. So, it's next one, you do have to use it sometime. Okay, it just turned, close the public hearing at seven forty-six. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, first of all, any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Go ahead, Lon.
Madam Chair, I move that one ninety, a hundred, I'm sorry, million, nine hundred and forty-seven, two fifty for the general fund capital reserve to the town warrant.
Motion made by Lon Woods, second by Barbara Healy. Any further discussion? Tom?
So I just wanted to kind of amplify a little bit of what Paul was saying, that this is something we've been doing years and years and years now, and it allows us to save up for major expenses that we know we're going to have. In fact, we've been able to use them recently for the purchase of fire trucks. We use them periodically for ambulances and for various assorted other things that are listed here. And so I just want people to understand that, yeah, you could, you could cut, you know, one-point-nine million out of the cost of the town's tax rate, however, that would be cutting your nose off to spite your face. We're, we're using these funds to avoid having to bond, to avoid having to come up with big swings in the budget from year to year and things of that nature. So, I encourage you to look at that. We have the option as a town council to split these out and make each of these a separate warrant article. The town council has felt in the past that that was not appropriate, it makes the budget, the ballot too long, and people have generally been supportive of these, and so we hope you will support them as well this year. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's, and I, every year, I think the same thing, especially at the deliberative session. I view these as savings accounts. So, I totally agree with what you're saying. Any other comments?
I would just add the benefit of having some of these projects shovel-ready. How many times have we been able to take advantage of a grant, because we have this money saved up and we're ready to go on a project immediately, and we don't have to worry about going and appropriating the funds? And so I think it gives us opportunity that some other communities can't take advantage of.
Agreed. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Saying none, six, zero, zero. Okay, we're getting there. Capital reserve deposits, wastewater.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wastewater, we're looking to increase wastewater capital reserve fund deposit fifty thousand dollars to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The reason being is that we, like I said, we have a thirty-two million dollar upgrade going on. We also have some older equipment still in some of our pump stations, and we felt that it would be best to take these pump stations as a one-off projects instead of trying to bond it and paying it over, you know, fifteen, fifteen, twenty years, to use the capital reserve funds, because we do have money in there for, for that purpose, to pay cash for repairing some of those pump stations, telemetry, things of that sort. What I would like to do is, I'd like to show people at home, this is of the projected projects that we have going on for these capital reason, capital reserve fund deposits. For instance, next year, we're looking at another ambulance, looking at body cameras for police officers. The sprinkler system... Um, the sprinkler system at the library needs to be upgraded and are, are repaired. And we're looking at things of that sort. Um, we buy trucks, you know, one-ton dump trucks, three-quarter ton dump trucks. Um, you know, we're looking at paving D W Highway. Uh, we're looking at upgrading the Penna Truck Sewer Pump Station, looking at buying a, uh, excuse me, a new loader at the compost facility, totaling about three million dollars worth of the money that's saved up over a number of years. And, and that's to Councilor Koenig's point. By saving that money, we're not spiking the tax rate by having to increase our budget by three million dollars. Cause we have the money saved up for these projects and we have been looking at it. And we utilize our capital, our capital improvements plan, which is a six-year plan. So we know what's coming up in the next few years and that's what these deposits are. They're broken up so we can save over a number of years amount of time for those projects such as an fire engine or an ambulance or, um, storage upgrades in our computer systems and things of that sort. So, thank you for letting me digress a little bit.
And we also don't have to bond, so we don't have to have an interest to it.
Right, exactly, we don't have to go out and get a three-point-two million dollar bond to pay for those capital needs.
Okay, but we still are, obviously, we need to do a motion. First of all, I have to open up the public hearing.
Yes.
For this. Uh, the capital reserve deposit wastewater, at seven fifty-one, I open up the public hearing for that. And I'm gonna close it at seven fifty-two. Okay, now, any questions?
No.
About the specific?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, my motion is to move the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for wastewater capital reserve fund to the town warrant.
Motion made by Barbara Healy, second by?
Second.
Tom Koenig. Any questions?
Paul, did you mention the tax impact of this capital reserve deposit?
I, this, on sewer infrastructure cap, there is no impact to the tax rate. This is one hundred percent paid by sewer users. Um, and it's included in the rates that, uh, the sewer users pay. Um, this is rolled into those rates.
Talking about feeding him a good question.
Well, you know, I, every time, every once in a while you gotta give him a softball.
But the point is, it has no tax.
There is no tax effect with this. Whenever we talk about wastewater, parks and rec and, and some of those things, we're talking about, what do you call those?
Self-supporting funds.
Self-supporting funds.
This one's an enterprise fund, which means that, they have to have the money, self-sufficient. It's, it's like its own corporation inside the town.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, no other questions, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, none, six, zero, zero.
And then, for public service announcement, deliberative session is March fifteenth. Uh, at seven P M. at James Master Cola Upper Medical, ah, James Master Cola Upper Elementary School in the All Purpose Room. And then annual voting day is Tuesday, April eleventh at seven to seven, seven A M. to seven P M. At three polling locations, James Master Cola Upper Elementary School, Saint John Newman Church, Merrimack Middle School. Um, if you do not know which polling location, uh, you can go on the Secretary of State's website, it'll be there. Or you can follow the links on the town's website in the Town Clerk Tax Collector uh, for that, um, for your polling location. Thank you.
There are no petitioned bonds nor, uh, any petition warrant articles submitted. Wow. We're about eighty percent.
Wanna thank the department heads again and they can go home.
They can be relieved. Thanks again for coming, everyone. You could, as they're smiling and leaving. Okay, legislative update from state representatives, I've received nothing, Paul, have you?
Um, no, I haven't received anything, um, email-wise, I can double-check, but I know that.
I haven't either, but Nancy Murphy, Representative Murphy, would like to say a few, few words.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to provide an update about a bill that I had mentioned, uh, my couple of weeks ago. Um, House Bill six fourteen was a bill I filed back in, um, November. Um, and the goal of the bill, um, on behalf of our community originally, as originally drafted, was to require our Department of Health and Human Services to collect data for Merrimack, uh, town of Merrimack, um, regarding the health impacts, um, that we're seeing here, we're hearing at least anecdotal evidence of and, um, the issues that are being raised of concern about health impacts known to be associated with PFAS exposure. And since we do have a higher, um, uh, you know, more, a higher exposure than many other towns and a cancer report that was just done in, um, was just updated in January and the information released, um, which shows that Merrimack, um, has an increased, or they call it an excess, number of kidney and renal pelvis cancers. Um, I was concerned about the public health impacts of the exposure we've had. Um, so the bill was writ, originally written to collect comprehensive data, which would have addressed a lot of things like thyroid disorders and, um, those kinds of things as well as the cancers and, and other, um, health impacts. Um, the division, uh, excuse me, Department of Health and Human Services submit with me, we've, we discussed this a number of times and the issue for them was that it was an overwhelming task and there, there are a number of foundational sort of steps that have to take, uh, uh, precedence and have to happen first. So I redrafted that bill and it, uh, it, when it, the last, um, uh, draft made this bill a purely focused on the kidney cancer, um, cause we didn't have that information back in November. So it was, um, it is a five hundred thousand dollar appropriation to the Department of Health and Human Services solely to, uh, complete a Part Three Protocol um, for a kidney cancer, um, feasibility study. We, um, had the public hearing, um, and, um, it went pretty well. And yesterday was the executive session where the members of the Health and Human Services Committee, uh, voted on it. And, um, after I'd worked with the Vice Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee, who was concerned about taxpayer money being spent to do this and the, and the cost. Um, and I suggested to that the people here that are suffering these health impacts are also taxpayers. Um, so they're paying with their health, they're paying with their taxes and, um, we came to an agreement, um, that was mutually agreeable with Department of Health and Human Services as to, um, how this could be funded, that D H H S would have to seek outside grants, et cetera. Um, and should those not be, um, uh, able to, to be obtained by the division, um, that, um, we would go before the, uh, Department of Health and Human Services Legislative Oversight Committee and the money would be released pending, uh, you know, we're, we're trying, we just can't get the money. Anyway, the, yesterday was the vote and, um, the vote was nineteen to one. And I understand that one vote sort of is contrary on every bill, so, um, I think, I don't think it was reflective of the bill. So, which was great, so we had full bipartisan support for it. So we're due to go, um, to the finance, I would imagine, and I believe Representative Mooney, uh, may be on that, uh, committee. So I'm hopeful that it'll have good support. You know, I know it's, it's money that the state's spending, but the information that will be gleaned from this will be, you know, um, applicable to, to the entire state, you know, communities that, that have this kind of exposure. So that was a good thing, it was a good week, so. And I just wanted to thank all of the Merrimack residents and citizens who wrote in support, who, um, uh, you know, gave the, the committee a sense, not only from here, but it was all over the state's support. So, but thank you to the Merrimack, um, residents who, who, um, helped us out.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I am pleased to announce that our Merrimack Public Library will be featured in an upcoming segment of New Hampshire Chronicle, highlighted how libraries have changed over the years. Reporter Jean Mackin and photographer Joe Wade visited the library on February thirteenth and were particularly interested in investigating our library of things collection. Those include cake pans, musical instruments, night vision goggles, outdoor yard games, video game systems, video games, and much more. This collection has been purchased using library trustee funds, friends of the library's donations, as well as through partnerships with several Merrimack Girl Scouts completing their Silver Awards. They are honored, as well as the town is honored, to be included to promote our Innovation Library along Peterborough, Dover, and the Minot Sleeper Library in Bristol. It's very good, so stay tuned, becau, an upcoming event, we don't have the date yet, sometime in March, but a vet will be highlighted on T V, so we'll have to get our autograph next time we see it.
Excellent, thank you. All done, Paul? There is no consent agenda, there's no old business, new business. Consideration of changes to Chapter one eighty, Temporary Sales Locations and Vendors of the Merrimack Town Code, first reading, submitted by Town Manager Paul McKelley, the town council to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to Chapter one eighty, Temporary Sales Location and Vendors of the Merrimack Town Code, pursuant to Charter Article, the Manoeuvre Five. Paul?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this has been in the works since the meeting that we had of May of twenty-twenty-two. Um, I have spent a lot of time researching our, um, Temporary Sales Location and Vendor Ordinance. I have talked to several of the gentlemen and ladies who come in and get a yearly, um, license to operate in the town of Merrimack. And I have talked, uh, read up from other communities what they do, as well as talk to these other vendors, cause they just don't vend in Merrimack, they vend in other communities as well and see what they like about those other communities, what they dislike, and things of that sort. So the first change is on the definitions of, we added a definition of contact information. Cause we ask for contact information and sometimes we get all this information, sometimes we just get, here, here's, here's my number. So, uh, contact information, the information such as your name, address, telephone number, an email address, and tell, that tells someone how to communicate with you in case there's a problem after the event or if there's a cancellation before the event. So that's one of the first changes. Uh, the other change is looking at license requirements. Uh, there, really, it says that before issuance of a license here on, the applicant shall provide the town council a complete and criminal background investigation, motor vehicle record provided by the applicant, um, in writing from the state of New Hampshire and applicant's state of residency. If you look at what I am trying, one eighty dash six H exemption, it says, "A completed background investigation dated within six months prior to the application in writing from the state of New Hampshire residents. Applications, applicants who engage in their peddler vendor hawker activities at an event with the approval from the event sponsor and write, and when said event has obtained all other required approvals from the state and town are exempt from this criminal background check requirement." Basically, what we're saying is that if you're at a vet and the event sponsor is taking responsibility for you, you don't need that requirement. Because it says right here, this is how to, basically this section is how to apply for a permit. So we just added that as, as a, a license requirement, if you're, you're exempt, you don't have to get that. Um, we crossed out, um, basically, the license requirements will be for everybody except for nonprofit or charitable organization. Any business now, in this, that, that's doing business in the town will have to get one, uh, a permit from us and pay the licensing fee. Um, that caused a lot of headache in my office by people saying, well, I have a, I operate a business and here's my permanent address and it's their home. And, or we get companies that come in and they do have brick and mortar and they say, here we are. So it was like, do we split hairs, how do we know? Just because they have a hawker peddler's license and that's their permanent address on the hawker peddlers, they were saying, well, I'm exempt from paying a fee. So we said, enough's enough, if you're not a nonprofit or charitable organization, you have to pay if you'd want a, a permit in this town of Merrimack. Uh, in the next license requirement exemptions, we included the word yard sales because item three, when reading it, to the average person, it means a yard sale. But we had some people say, well, I'm going to my neighbor's house and I'm selling my X Y Z that I produce. No, it's, if there's a yard, that was really meant for yard sales. It wasn't meant that you're just going over to your neighbor and they might be having a sale on something or, or, you know, a yard sale and you're gonna sell your, your stuff at that yard sale. It, it's, it's more of a, this is just for yard sales. I know that's, it, but it's for yard sales, I think that's pretty clear now that, that's what that's for. Um, and then, we, we do not have a farmer's market anymore. If we do become and have a farmer's market, I'll bring that exemption back up. Um, then, uh, and the next one, Application for Alliance, uh, one eighty-five, prerequisites be, we included door-to-door and root-based hawkers and peddlers or vendors shall register with the Merrimack Police Department prior to commencing sales activity. And what we wanna do there is we wanna make sure that the police department and dispatch knows where they're selling. Because, let me tell you, if people in neighborhoods see a car that they don't recognize or somebody walking around, they're calling dispatch up and saying, hey, uh, there's a strange man. And if we say, yep, we know there's a X Y Z in your area today, thank you for the call. And it will help alleviate some of that, we're sending out a patrolman to that area and then we find out they pull out their license, say, but I'm approved, but I'm approved. So this way it's, we're getting them and we're telling them upfront they have to do that.
Lon has a question?
Yeah, the, if the question of the individual that shows up at your door saying you need new siding or windows is, show me your permit.
They're supposed to have it on them. There you're supposed to have it on them, on their body.
So, so anybody that comes to your door should have what you're talking about?
Yes, they should, they should come through and, and have it on them to get a permit from the office.
And if they don't?
They don't, then, then, you know, you could call the police and say that or, you know, you, you should be able to, you could call the police and say so-and-so from solar panels. And that is the other reason why we took out, uh, permanent, you know, permanent business because T-Mobile says, oh, well, we have a, we have an office in Merrimack, so we're, we don't need this peddler's license. Or, uh, Solar City, oh, we have a, we have a satellite office in Merrimack, so, you know, we have a satellite office, maybe not in Merrimack, but in Hudson, so we don't need your permit because we have a satellite office. That's why we took that requirement away and said, everybody except for nonprofit and charity, everybody has to have it. So in your case, they come to your door, they're supposed to have a permit going forward, once this is passed.
I've had that experience. The fellow represented himself as an employee of a finance group that had an office in Merrimack.
Ah.
But he had no other identification or reason to presenting himself to me. Thank you.
Yep, you missed a state, you're under the neighborhood. Nancy, did you have a question?
You were probably entertaining his grandchildren.
Probably.
I did, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just, I'm just number three, I'm looking at the second part of that sentence, uh, the first sentence, and I'm just wondering, I understand what the, what the thought is, but could that property of others with the property owner's permission could be construed to, for, to say, if I'm a crafter and I wanna have a craft sale or a, in my driveway, but have a bunch of other brand-new items that I'm selling basically for profit in my driveway, could that be used to get away with that exception? I mean, it's a, it's, I know what it means, you, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Do a yard sale, is it? That would be part of a yard sale, right. You know, I would think it would be a yard sale if you're doing it in your own yard, even if it is brand-new stuff.
Yeah, if it, if it's in your yard, it's a yard sale. Case in point, you can't have a yard sale at the outlet mall. Can't have a yard sale at the vault unless you're a nonprofit for profit. If you have a yard sale at the vault, then you need a permit.
But could a, but could a vendor, somebody that might go to the mall usually, have people within different towns use their, and use a location in Merrimack as a yard sale and send, sell those items? I mean, it's a yard.
Resident, right?
It, it's, like I said, it's, I understand it's a yard, but it's more of a resident. It's. It has, it's, it's, like I said, it's, I understand it's a yard, but it's more of a resident. It's like, uh, it's like, for instance, your neighborhood.
Yep.
If you're having a yard sale and you want to bring in some crafters to sell on your property, you can do that because it's, it's considered your private property. It's your yard sale. You cannot do that at a place of business such as Anheuser-Busch or, um, you know, the outlet malls or, or individual businesses, which is a little different than my personal Paul McKelley's address of one, two, three, four, anywhere in the United States, having a yard sale, bringing in some crafters.
Thank you.
Okay?
Go ahead and, um, uh, is it, have we done the section yet? Yeah, bring it up now before we go further, I suppose.
Okay. So on section one eighty dash three license requirements, you know, we, um, one of the thing is, the criteria is that you have to be able to produce a criminal background investigation. If I'm a crafter and I'm knitting baby clothes and I want to sell them at a craft show, it's, it's, you are getting, you have an agreed-upon price, the person pays you the price, you hand over the article immediately. Unlike if you are getting estimates and setting up uh, services with a door-to-door salesperson who you're giving a down payment to and you have a promise of services at a later date. I can see those people needing a criminal background check, but not for the gal or the guy who's there knitting baby clothes to sell at a craft fair. It just seems a little extreme, especially since the service is being given to the person right away with the exchange of the money.
And that is why we have the exception of one eighty dot six H, which says that if the event organizers wants to take responsibility.
But this may not be an organization type of situation. A lot of times event organizers, you, do you think that most of the cra- I mean, I've been to craft fairs that don't really have an event organizer. So it might just be the way the town is and maybe they don't require event organizers to, they just say, come and get your spot and you're good. Maybe not in Merrimack.
So let's say that someone gets to a hypothetical. Let's say they want to do a craft fair at the Tractor Supply packer line and a whole bunch of, uh,
People show up.
People show up, okay. And you, and you're, and you're giving a booth.
But there would be
Sound like booties.
But there would be some kind of organizer who's doing that, whether it's an individual or
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Or a business. Organizer would be the one responsible for getting criminal checks.
Well, they, they could waive that and take the responsibility that they're not bringing criminals into the town and take that responsibility. So
The organizer.
The organizer.
Okay.
Because they know the vendors that they're bringing in, into town.
So are, are we as a town, are we accepting any liability by providing an exemption for the background check? So, you know.
Honestly, honestly, the reason why we're doing background checks is because we didn't want individuals that were a little shady doing business in Merrimack well, uh, at certain events, but if the event organizer is taking that responsibility on, then they are liable that if somebody, something happens at an event that's shady. Yeah, well, usually they get insurance for things of that sort.
But I guess my question is, I mean, is a town still liable just because we, we let some event organizer that we don't know provide us a, a statement that says, hey, this is not a shady character? And we let a shady character in town to do business?
I could find that out for, I don't have that answer.
I'm, I'm almost the opposite of, of Counselor Healy in that I'm not so sure that I like the exemption.
So you can only transfer liability.
Yeah, well, i- if you think about the, the person that's doing the knitting of the baby clothes, right? Is this going to be the only craft fair that they do in the state of New Hampshire? I mean, they're probably doing this quite often. They probably got a state background check for some other town. We're not the only town that requires state background checks. Is that correct?
No, other town, other communities do.
So, um, yeah. My guess is they probably already have a, a state background check.
And it's real easy to get a background check, to be honest with you. Um, Sharon does it all the time uh, for the town and Sharon, do you want to explain the process a little bit?
Yeah, so.
Uh, come up to a microphone, please. Yeah. She thought she could get away with sitting there. She's been there so long that I figured she finally wants to say something.
So if you go up to Concord, it's a twenty-five dollar fee. You fill out a form. If it's for you, you're filling it out, you're showing your ID, you're giving them twenty-five dollars, they give you your background check. If you mail it in, it takes a few weeks, but same process. Um, they can also have somebody get it for them. If they're unable to do it themselves, they get the form notarized, who it goes to, they can go to Concord and get it right in hand. There's state of their residence, so if they live in a different state, it varies by state, so I, I wouldn't be able to tell you.
So it's really sort of a minimal problem to get it.
I think people would argue that it's, that it's more than minimal. I mean, yes, you can mail it in and it takes two or three weeks and that makes it somewhat minimal if you have that kind of planning in advance, but driving up to Concord for a lot of people is a hardship.
But that's, that's the way the risk, you know, the benefit ratio can
I mean, absolutely. You know, I don't want to make it any harder for having craft fairs in town. You know, I'm, I'm not for that at all. But when you think about the purpose behind a background check and then, you know, to say that we're going to waive that based on somebody else saying, I'll take responsibility, but we don't know who that person is any more than we know who the person that isn't getting a background check is.
I, I understand the question. I can ask it, or we'll ask it for our insurance company. This has been reviewed by legal counsel.
Ah.
But I'll have to ask that question about risk of liability to our insurance providers. And most of the craft fairs, forgive me, but uh, most of them are done by not-for-profit or charitable organizations. There are a couple, there are, there are a couple that do it for profit and they charge significant amount of money to be in their booth. They're not, they're not popping up at Tractor Supply saying, let's have a craft fair today. Um, they're, they're planning and organizing it and, and charging a significant amount of money. And yes, you do get some of those people who knit booties and, and sweaters and, 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 you know, at those, but, you know.
Most of the ones I've seen this time are associated with like schools.
Schools or church.
Or church, right.
Yeah, I
Or seniors.
Or seniors, right, which are all, which all are underneath the charity slash not-for-profit organization.
Which falls under
Falls under, you don't have to get a permit to be there. It's the ones for profit, the ones that are at the outlet mall. The ones that are at Anheuser-Busch, which they don't really do one there. The one that is at Tractor Supply, things of that sort.
That's what I'm saying, the for-profit makes a difference.
I think it's better to say it that way.
To write in for profit?
Maybe. Or maybe just on the other in section H. Where, you know, maybe you can validate or at least explain it a little better.
Would that help you feel better? Andy? If it was written for profit?
I mean, for me, I, I would just like a legal read to say whether we're, we're accepting liability by giving this waiver or not.
Okay, okay.
So one more thing, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Um, also in the way the line reads, the applicant shall provide, still in that section A of one eighty dash three, shall provide to the town council a completed criminal background investigation, da, 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 da. Shouldn't that be a town manager or his designee? Because that's the way we do everything else. No one comes directly to the town council. And we're not issuing the permit.
Well, technically you are. You gave me permission to issue the permit.
So shouldn't that say that?
It, the permit's coming, they're, they're applying for the permit to the town council. I am just the designee to sign off because when this purse came into effect, the town council had to sign off and every one of them. And finally I said, enough.
Because this is part of the code, right?
Yes.
It's part of the town code, so.
Well, we're changing the code.
Yeah, but that's, that's why it has to be town council. Because we're setting your code.
Okay, just double checking.
No, but I understand your point.
Yes, yes. I'm the designee that it's later on that gives me permission in here that I can do all that stuff. On one of the other last numbers, I don't know exactly.
Did we do one eighty dash five, part C yet?
Uh, hmm, we can go there right now, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
As in C, it, where it says applicant shall provide a copy of their approved itinerant vendor to the Merrimack Police Department. Is that the state or Merrimack?
That's Merrimack.
Can we say that?
Uh, their approved Merrimack, yes.
Because remember, there's a state one too, so I didn't know which one you were talking about.
We, we can throw the name Merrimack in front of itinerant vendor.
Yeah.
All right, we good with the first two pages?
Yeah.
All right, moving on to page three. Um, basically, we just, that, that was that definition we put in there. Um, number one on one eighty dash six A, it just was very wordy, so we just said contact information for both the owner and the permit applicant. If sometimes they're different. Um, and uh, in writing is the event sponsor we wanted in writing that they're taking over the legal liability, but we will get you, Counselor Hunter, your legal opinion on H to see if that's okay. And those are the only changes I had on three. The license required shall be issued by the town council or their designee, which is, that's giving me the permission to sign it at that point, issuing it. Okay. I don't have a problem if you want me to put it on the, the other one too, town council or designee. Yep, all right. So that's page three. Page four. Um, we have a rolling year and that's become very cumbersome for us with, with the licensing, because some people might get the licensing in July and then all of a sudden there's an event in June and, and they're okay with it. And then other people, well, why, where are they? How come they had to get their license? They, I didn't have to, you know, they didn't get to get the license, we did. So what we said is, look, we discussed this in my, our office and we had a big debate about this, is that when do we want to start the year? And it's going to be consistent for everybody. So we're going to have a start and end date. And we said, well, April first is a good time because people are gearing up for events in May and June and July and they know where they'll be for the summer. And it dies down in New Hampshire in the months of January and February and March a little bit, but the, to do it from April to March is a good time because they'll get them in in March when it's a slow period and we can get them processed for the yearly vendors. Um, so we changed that from a rolling to a specific date. I uh, talked to several of the vendors about that. They like that a lot better. Um, they, they feel that, that if they know they need this stuff, they'll get us the stuff. And, and honestly, we looked at our vendors and we have one that begins in November. We have six or seven that begin in June for a year. And that's it. And the only reason why the six or seven in June is because that's when Anheuser-Busch starts all their events, June and July. So it's just cheaper them, for them to buy a yearly at that time. This way, if they want to come in in June, it's still two hundred and fifty dollars. But know that you're good until the following March.
Yeah, not to the following June.
Not to the following June, you're good to the following March.
So whatever they start.
There will be an end date on the permit.
Like, right, okay. So you have like November, it'll be good until the following March thirty-first.
Right, well, yes.
And then they'll replay it first.
And I talked to that gentleman the other day in my office and uh, he understood what we were doing. He's, that'd be great. That'd be great. As long as I know it. And I said, I know you're, you're paid up through June of twenty twenty-three. When you come in for June, I mean, not June, November of twenty twenty-three, when you come in, we're going to give you till the following, we're not going to cut it off on March twenty twenty-four. We'll give you the extension through the following March of twenty-four. We're grandfathering those couple of months because of the change. And instead of prorating from November to March and then saying, here you go, we just, we figure, there's only one of them. So it makes it a lot easier. If I had, if I had several, uh, you know, fifteen, twenty of them, I'd be like, nope, we're going to prorate and this is the deal, but with one, it's there. The next big change in this whole ordinance is multiple locations. Um, we have vendors who come to multiple locations and do multiple events. And every, I hear it all the time. I just gave you two hundred and fifty dollars. Now I got to come and get another one, there's another two hundred and fifty. All right, now I'm doing a third one, here's, so you're getting seven hundred and fifty dollars for me, out of me for these three events. Can't I just get a multiple location permit? And this way I can sell at all these, because I'm calling up health inspector and saying, hey, I got to get my vehicle inspected again. It's like, you were just here last week. Yeah, the vehicle hasn't changed, but I got a new location. I got Able Ebenezer. I got the outlet mall. And every time they're supposed to get in, so what I decided and talked to the staff and presenting it to the council for their approval is we do a tiered multiple location. However, it isn't a, hey, let me give me my year starting in April and then in July I come back and say, oh, by the way, I want my second location for X Y Z Pottery Barn. No, they have to have all their locations listed out at the initial time of application. Meaning that if I know that I go to Anheuser-Busch, if I know that I go to, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm using Anheuser-Busch, but they have a lot of events in town. They, they do this, the outlet mall's another area where they have some events. Um, and then Able Ebenezer is another one, and then we have uh, um, some miscellaneous throughout town. But if they know they're going to these areas on a yearly basis and they're going to go there, they just come in when they put in their application in March and say, I want to be at X Y Z location. There's two fifty for the first location, a hundred dollars for the second location, and then twenty-five dollars after that for each other location. The reason being is
And that's good for the year.
Good for the year. We don't, the, the information they're giving us, they're giving us the background check, they're getting their vehicles inspected and this, this will, you know, it will help and really
It will help everybody.
It helps everybody. I've talked to three vendors. Of course, they're loving it because now they're not paying seven fifty, they're paying four hundred, say, for four locations, which is helping them out because a food truck isn't making a lot of money. You know, um, they're selling, if they're selling a thousand dollars of interest, and I'm not into making them profitable, but if they're selling a thousand dollars, if they're giving the town of Merrimack ten cents for every sale, then the people who are going up to the food truck are the ones that are buying it. And those are our residents that are going up to these food trucks and buying the food, so hopefully the, they don't raise their price kind of with that. But that was, that was one of the biggest complaints that I received in my office. Multiple location, multiple location, multiple location. I think I kind of worked it out here and then they have to, they have to call the police twenty-four hours in advance and tell them they're going to be at that other location. Now, if there's a
So they've already been approved.
They've already been approved.
It's just a notification.
A notification. And that's so that if there's another vendor who comes in and they're sitting there and they, they're the ones, you know, I, I paid for my permit, Nancy didn't. Or vice versa, Nancy paid for a permit and then all of a sudden I show up, well, why are they there? No, they already paid for their permit and it when it will settle some of those discussions. And if the police come out there, they know that Paul McKelley's supposed to be there at X Y Z locations and they'll come and discuss it that way instead of saying, hey, you know, you, you guys are in a fight, let me handle it that way. So.
Andy?
Two questions. What's the difference between the second location and the third location?
Try honestly, just put numbers down and, and to look at this. There's still some, you know, most vendors have two locations and just try to, to put a number down to a piece of paper. Honestly, there was no rhyme or reason why I went with a hundred or, or, um, twenty-five. However, when I did look at other towns, they had that kind of tier. Their first location was high. Second location was kind of middle. Third location was down on the low end. Their first location was high, second location was kinda middle, third location was down on the low end.
And then, second question, wh- what are we trying to control by having? Having them do all of this at the time of the initial application? Instead of coming in later and adding a second, third, fourth location?
My staff time. Because now I gotta pull it, I gotta look at it, if it's after six months, technically on this policy, they're supposed to give me a new. A new uh, background check.
Yeah, and a new inspection.
After six months, correct?
After six months and a new, then we're gonna have to re-inspect and all that other stuff. So it's.
We should bring the class out.
That's really why we're doing it that way. Cause what does, if they don't come in at time, then we'd have to re-inspect. And most of these people that are, that, that would be interested in this, I have probably three vendors that would be interested in this. They know where they're gonna be, they know that they're gonna sell at at least three locations.
Yeah, I just, I, I guess, you know, if we're gonna do this. For me, I, I struggle with this that we're gonna require them to do it at the time of the initial. But yet, we're gonna charge them more for the second and than we are the third. Or we, we say you can do it any other time, but the second costs more. You know, and it gets cheaper as you go and, you know, there's a six month period where you can add locations. But, excuse me, they are more expensive, you know, they're not twenty-five dollars, but. I guess I just struggle, why are we charging them a hundred dollars for the second one? And only twenty, yeah, a hundred dollars for the second one, twenty-five dollars for the third one. If they're standing at the counter doing them all at one time anyways.
And, and I brought those numbers up to one of our vendors who I know would be jumping on this. He didn't bat an eye, he said, that's awesome. Do you want me to go to council and tell them that's awesome? I'll go to the council and tell them that's awesome.
Surprise at this time, what, what was the cost? What was the alternative?
The alternative was two hundred and fifty dollars for a year. And then another two hundred and fifty dollars for another location if they wanted to do a year.
And if there was a third one?
Another two hundred and fifty dollars, or if they were only gonna sell for one day, it was fifty dollars.
Yeah, I think Councilor Hunter's concern begs the question of how. How many of these multiple site vendors? Does the town expect to deal with over a year? Thank you.
And right now they're paying. Five hundred and fifty to seven fifty.
Okay, I'm good.
Do you wanna suggest something different?
I mean, if I was to write the policy, it doesn't make sense to me the, the way it's written. I, I, I don't know how we justify saying we're gonna charge them a hundred dollars for the second one. Then there's no more work for the second one than there is the third one. You know, we're trying to cover the expense to the town. Is it, I, I guess that's a question, is this a revenue stream or are we trying to cover the expenses to the town?
A little bit of both.
And, and that's really what it boils down to, if we want it to be a revenue stream, then, you know, I have. I have no issue with the, the fee structure as it is. If we're just trying to, you know, control this. And at the same time, cover the town's expense to control and monitor this, then, you know, it should be tw- twenty-five dollars for the second one. It, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but I'm not, I'm not stuck one way or the other, I, I could approve it as is.
Honestly, I think it's also. So that somebody just doesn't come in and just start throwing down a bunch of locations. The hundred dollars for the second location is, okay, I really gotta think, am I gonna sell there or am I just gonna? You know, say, hey, I'm gonna be here, or hey, I'm gonna be there, and that's why, and most towns, like I said. Most towns do have a scaled down on, on theirs. I just put numbers down on a piece of paper. You know, between two fifty, a hundred and then twenty-five.
Paul, do we offer any exclusivity on locations when they make these applications for a license?
Nope, there's only one location in town that has an, is exclusive and that's because of the um, site plan.
Because of the what?
Site plan. Of where the loc- where they're selling.
Right, so. If there isn't.
We give them a license, one guy calls the police department, says, I'm gonna be there, does that give them now exclusivity for the next day? Or if the other guy shows up?
No, no, does not. Just tells them that they're there and as long as the other, the next guy who shows up. There at those, that location, has a permit to be at that location.
And has also told the police department he was gonna be there.
Be there, yeah.
Then, then the two of them get to the same location, there's only room for one and. They fight it out.
So when you, so.
But when we're, when we're doing the, really what this is for is the bigger events. And, you know, if they're selling on, if they're selling on town property, we're gonna know about it. You know, we're gonna, because we have to approve anything on town property. So it's really for the, the bigger events that they're selling. You know, for several days, and they can't just, they can't just show up. For instance, if. XYZ company is holding an event. They can't just say, okay, I, I, I'm coming today because I got this permit, it's gotta be, you know, case in point, Able Ebenezer's. There's not enough room for more than one food truck vendor. So Able Ebenezer has to say, no, this is, I said that.
Joe Smith could come or not.
Come and sell that day. Just because you have this permit from the town doesn't give them exclusive rights to sell. They still need permission from the owner of the business to sell that day.
I guess I'm envisioning two hot dog vendors showing up at a soccer field or something like that.
We, at, at something like on the soccer field, since we own that property, we control that.
Good.
We, we, we can control that, that, you know, they, they have it, you know.
What about different fields?
That's the thing. There's tons of soccer fields in town.
Okay, so what is, what does the group think about this? As is, changes, whatever? What are your thoughts?
I think it's great. I move it to the uh, public hearing.
Cause there's nothing else aside from that, okay.
I make a motion, we move to the public hearing.
Motion made by Tom Koenig.
Second.
Signed by Nancy Murphy. Any other discussion?
Any other discussion?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any recusers? A six zero zero.
And, and I am moving it forward with the changes that were suggested.
Okay.
I just wanna clarify that.
Adding of the town council, town manager.
Alright, thank you, just wanted to clarify, don't wanna assume.
Thank you.
Okay, next, number two, town of Merrimack naming policy review and discussion. Submitted by town manager Paul McCauley, the town council to review and discuss the town of Merrimack's naming policy.
This has come up. Back in October of twenty twenty was the last time that we had somebody come in front of the council. To donate um, an item, a bench. And at that time, the town council asked then town manager to write. Or amend the current policy that we have in place. Um, basically, what I did here is uh, add the section for benches. Because we have. A spec for a bench when somebody wants to donate a bench. But yet, that wasn't clear. And each individual park location has an area where we would like to have these benches. For instance, Abbey Griffin Park, we kinda want them on the outskirts. We don't wanna bench put right in front of the bandstand, we kinda want them on the outskirts. At Watson Park, we kinda want them on the, that, I'll call it a meandering sidewalk.
Where the trees are.
Where the trees are, we kinda want them up in that section of, of the park because of our limitations of digging and, and things of that sort within the park. And we don't want a kid running after a frisbee because we put a bench in the middle of the park. And then all of a sudden, it becomes us, our fault that they got hurt, because we shouldn't have ever put it there. So what I tried to do is, is I tried to incorporate that, I tried to incorporate what are, if you're gonna do a bench, what it needs to be. Um, and this is not a spec that I wrote, this was a spec that we took from Abbey Griffin. So this has already been in the town, it's just never been in this policy. Um, and then the other thing I did, um, trees. People, oh, I wanna donate a tree and plant a tree, well, that's great. However, that means that if they donate the tree. My DPW or my building and grounds now have to go make sure that tree gets watered or the gator on the bottom is filled. What I said is that it needs to be a low maintenance tree and a tree that is conducive to that soil and things of that sort. You don't wanna put um, a, um, a palmetto tree in the middle of Watson Park. It's not gonna grow because of our climate. But an oak tree might, or a, a maple tree or, or magnolia might, you know. You know, things of that sort, so you want them kinda native to the area. Um, and then uh. Really, the, the, it's just really a lot of uh. Renumbering and, and just adding the words benches and trees and, and things of that sort. So, that, that's just bringing it forward.
Uh, Tom, and then Lon.
Paul, in section D on the second page, it talks about. Must be at least six inches in diameter. That's a huge tree.
That was just.
Diameter, not circumference.
Yeah.
Half a foot across.
That, that, yes, it is a bigger tree.
Bigger than most people can move around.
It was just something that I took off of another website, if we wanted to do a three inch or a four. Um, it was more for getting the. Well, not, not that, but you know.
Jumping off.
I, I don't wanna, we don't want saplings, we don't want people, and nothing's wrong with planting saplings. But we don't want a sapling to come in to town. Because look what happens.
Does sound funny, no saplings allowed.
I'm gonna be, yeah, okay, Frasier Square, case in point. The Christmas tree that's at Frasier Square right now, after I did all that research, was a dedication. Of the tree. That was. Three foot high at the time when they planted it and probably.
You can't find the sign anymore cause it's underneath.
It's underneath the tree because it has grown over, over the years. I'm, I'm trying to get trees, cause of the low maintenance and stuff that's gonna survive.
No, I understand that part, it's just a six inch diameter.
It was, it was a jumping, it's a jumping off point into the pond. Probably three inches will be, be suffice. I just don't want a tree that is not.
I would say something like three, yeah.
Is not.
Three inch diameter, yes.
Two to three inch.
No, wait, actually, Lon first, Dan Barber.
Yeah, continuing with the six inch tree. I understand exactly what your concerns are. But even a three inch tree, when you think about the um, root ball. Are we going to be, is DPW or the gardener, whatever part of that is, going to be the ones? Planting the tree, are we going to be giving permission to people for, they're gonna have to use more than a. Uh, more than my garden spade that I use to plant my tomatoes every spring.
Planting several trees over my career before I became an accountant. Um, in my prior, prior life, uh, yeah, you're not gonna use your garden spade, but you're gonna have to use a shovel. And if somebody wants to donate a tree, I would assume that they're donating it in the ground. Now, if it's a ceremonial tree that we're choosing to plant, that's a different story. But, and honestly, I have not seen anybody requesting a tree. To be planted as a memorial to somebody in a long time.
But they could.
They could, the last, the last one was Frasier Square and they were the crimson maples that went in at Frasier Square.
What about here in the town, right in the, those are dedicated trees. In between the park and woods.
Not that I'm aware of, I know that, I know there's one in the front.
They were put there as a memorial. Doctor Phil, Masino.
Okay, um, but I know there's one in the front.
When, when they were talking about the um, courthouse, it came up. This was built, this was put in memory of.
Yeah, and it's been a while since those kind of.
I don't think they're plaques, but.
Yeah, I, I will talk to him about those, but yeah, they. If they're coming in, of course, we're gonna have to save with where they go as well. So I, I'm, I'm okay with a two to three inch tree, I want something that's a little.
Two to three, yeah.
A little hardier than, than a.
Yeah, I mean. Responsible for their tree surviving.
Right, you go to Tractor Supply, you get one of those.
Fruit trees, it's a half inch diameter.
Half inch diameter and they wanna donate.
You can walk over cause you don't see it. Barbara, you had a question?
Uh, yeah, um. Trees, benches, monuments, historical signs.
Where are you?
First page, whereas, or. Um, it doesn't include historical signs and we do have some along different ways here in town. So I, I think we need to add that as well. And also down in uh, section one, part B. Whether, you know, anytime that there's a person is giving historical information. I think we need to use our historical commission to validate that the information is right or even add to it. That's what we got them for.
Where, you're talking about the list of criteria?
Yeah, that and, B and C actually.
That's to be evaluated by the, by the town council, it's not necessarily has to be proven when they deliver it, I guess.
Well, we need someone to validate it.
Well, the town council can give it to the Parks and Rec Committee, they can give it to the Heritage Commission.
So what you're suggesting will be part of the town council's deliberation.
Is to include the historical commission, not the society.
Okay, but you know what I mean, but it doesn't, but that's what the responsibility of the town council would be.
Because I think in here it did mention something about giving it to Parks and Rec or whatever, well. They won't know, they, they're not the historians of the town, so.
It's two E one, it would be the town council may authorize the Parks and Rec Committee to take public input to make the recommendation. Or utilize. Town. Commissions.
Boards, commissions, whatever.
And to be able to utilize.
Yeah, it's gonna do.
To be. Could we go back to where you're thinking of implanting the words? Historical plaques?
The second whereas.
In the listing, yeah, it's uh. Whereas the second paragraph, council may on occasion to place trees, benches slash monuments. At, so it should maybe be place trees, benches slash monuments slash historical signs.
Thank you.
And it repeats in section one A as well. And on the form.
Lon, did you have a question?
Yeah, on the second page, uh, number ten, up there at the top, seven, eight, nine, all benches must be pinned to the ground. What do we mean by a pin? Is that go, is that going to preclude benches from Wasserman Park, I mean, Watson Park?
Sorry, um, no, because what you do with a pin is you drive it in with a hammer, you're not digging up the ground. To put the pin in, and then the granite poles are cord. to put the pin in. And then the granite poles are corded and they go on top of the pin to secure them from being toppled.
Okay, thank you.
Did Paul want to finish, or are you?
Um, basically, you know, that, that's that, that was it in a nutshell of what we were looking to do. Um, because we have had an uptick in, in the last couple of weeks, people have called about benches. So, that led me to go back and say, can I look at the last set of minutes? And that's when I found that the council asked for that to come back.
Tom?
One, one more minor technicality. And in uh, E three at the, at the end, you said placement and or renaming and left the E on the end where the ing replaced it. Just need to remove that E.
Right, yeah, the E comes off because naming, you dropped the E, what the ing, uh?
Yeah, but it wasn't lined out or anything, so.
And you're naming. Like, it's naming. It would be naming, placement and or naming.
Andy? Uh, just clarification and maybe education on my part. Does these, the spec for these benches, I, I know this policy is, is for uh parks and public facilities, but the specs to these benches, does that apply to uh conservation property as well?
These are memorial benches.
These are memorial benches when uh, like, in loving memory of Jackie Floyd.
But if, if somebody wants to place a memorial bench on conservation land, conservation do, do we need to follow these specifications for a bench? Or if someone wants to donate a wood bench, is that okay for a conservation?
For conservation, yeah. The conservation would accept that.
Perfect.
This is for granite benches and that's what we really
But you could have wooden benches anywhere.
Right.
So are you saying that this is, it's really, it does bring up a good question.
Good question.
I mean, this, the way it's written, I understand it as anywhere in town, this is the criteria. Versus this is suggested if it's a granite bench. What? Do you know what I'm saying? I agree.
So maybe you need to say C is a granite bench is donated to the town. Must meet these criteria.
Because if they grant, they have, I would say have, yeah.
And I don't think the intent of this, or to this bench specification is to cover
No, I, I'm not covering, I'm not covering a wooden bench that, or one of these new fangled, uh
Then there should be an exception statement.
You know, well
Well, I
Poly, poly, poly benches or
I mean, this, this policy is specific to parks and public facilities. So I, I think we're good. I just want to make sure if the conservation commission's doing something different, they're okay to do something different. I think they are. Because this policy doesn't, doesn't necessarily apply to conservation land.
Isn't it a public facility?
It is.
I'm just saying it could be pushed.
I, I'm okay. I just want to make sure whatever the conservation commission is doing is within the will of the council.
Yeah. I got you.
I think you just need to change it to granite benches because if, if they want to put something out in Twin Bridges alongside of the water or something, it probably doesn't need to be a granite bench.
No, I, I just changed it to granite benches.
Thank you.
The other thing is, is though, that'll take care. Andy, uh, Council Hunter just opened up the can of worms, no offense. Um, that uh, do we need to add something about regular benches that they are placed in may choose a bench shall be placed in available areas depicted by Apico Park map? Because if somebody wants to not put a granite bench, but just a XYZ bench, right in the middle of Watson Park.
Well
You know, that's
But anything they do has to get approved.
Right, but, but, you know, the same thing could be of the conservation commission is, is that somebody goes out there and says, I'm donating this bench and I want it here. And
No, the site has to be approved.
The site has to be approved. And, and that's what I'm kind of getting at. Do we need to say that here is that for all benches, the donor may choose where the bench shall be placed from an available
It may be request.
Yeah, request.
But would have to be approved by the town council.
Yeah, or, or
Because that would be part of it presented. We'd look at it.
Or they're designated. Could be the conservation commission.
Yes.
Donors may request.
So I think you're right. You don't want it in the middle of the field.
Right.
But I think like the twin bridge, you wouldn't want a granite down there. You'd want a wooden
Wooden or a polygon or something.
Right.
I think number eight, nine, and ten really are for all benches. Because the last thing I would want to do is have a bench put in the conservation commission. And then somebody comes in there and picks it up and throws it or breaks it or things of that sort. So I think numbers eight, nine, and ten really do apply for all benches. One through seven apply for granite benches.
Yep.
And what I can do with there is I can add a statement, all benches, benches whether, whether granite or wooden slash plastic, da 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 da.
I mean, they, they'd all have to be pinned to the ground somehow.
Yeah.
Couldn't you have engraving?
Do you want to take another crack at this, Paul, and bring it back again, or?
I got some good input here.
I, I understand.
No, and it was
Before us voting on it, is what you're saying?
Yeah. I, I doubt, like I said, I do have some good input here, and I think the council understands where we're going with the granite portions of it. But there were definitely some questions about some of the other items which were brought up. They were very good questions.
Lon, did you have a question as well? You're outside.
Okay.
Nancy?
I, I was just gonna say, um, the engraving, I know you, we were just talking about that in terms of a granite, but couldn't you have engraving on a, you know, a, some kind of specially treated wood with a plaque on it? Couldn't there be engraving? So should that be part of, uh, could be any engraving on a bench? I mean, I don't know what that could be made of, but the potential exists for something else to be engraved.
Uh, what we could say, or a plaque approved by the town council, designated on benches.
Proposed. They must propose.
But it, you know, if it's a, you know, X, Y, Z, plastic bench, you know, somebody wants to attach in loving memory of ex-mom.
So the, so the, the request must include a proposal of the etching.
All right. Uh, I got enough information if you just want to uh table this until uh, March ninth?
Move to table from March ninth.
Second.
Commission bid by Tom Keeney, signed by Barbara Healy. To table until March, what was it?
The ninth?
Ninth. There you go. Sounds good. Okay, number three. What? Oh, we have to vote on the table.
Getting sarcastic.
Thank you. Those in favor of the tabling, uh, please vote.
Aye.
And it's not even close to ten yet. And I have all this to read yet. Okay, so that's six zero zero. Yes, Mr. Woods.
I know that, I know the motion's passed. I just want to know if the manager will have time to bring in sample benches.
Very funny, isn't he, huh?
Sure.
He's trying to get those shirts in while he can. Okay. There you go. Review of the twenty-three, twenty-four default budget. The town council will review the twenty-three, twenty-four default budget by town manager.
I'm pretty much all talked out, so I'm gonna pass, I'm gonna pass this over to Tom to do.
It's been a lot of talking tonight. I get you. Oh, you've designated Tom to do it, is that what you?
That's what he said.
Ah, I missed that. I should designate someone to read the warrant.
Okay. Um, first off, I want to apologize for having to speak to you through this mask this evening. I'm gonna do my best to be clear. Um, but I did have a household member test positive for COVID last week, so I'm following the rules that say I need to mask up for ten days. I'm on day eight. I have no symptoms and I tested negative yesterday, but since our HR director just recently left the room and may still be watching on TV, I'm gonna keep this mask on so I don't get myself in
You notice he's, he's concerned not with the town manager. But the HR.
Um, so the default budget. I just wanted to review very quickly for the benefit of the, the people at home, uh, what the, what the default budget is. Um, the default budget is basically the mechanism that the legislators came up with so that municipalities could continue to operate in the event that, uh, that the voters vote no on the proposed operating budget. Um, so this is the budget that, that goes into effect in the event that the voters do not vote to approve the proposed operating budget. Um, so this is defined by statute, and the way that you calculate the default budget is by taking the amount of the same appropriations as contained in the operating budget authorized for the previous year, reduced and increased as the case may be by debt service, contracts, and other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law and reduced by one-time expenditures contained in the operating budget. One-time expenditures are appropriations that are not likely to reoccur
Can you hold on a second, Tom?
Seeding budget.
Do you have a question, Tom?
I didn't mean necessarily to interrupt at that, but in the first line here, you say that the the twenty-three, twenty-four budget as an operating budget is thirty-six million, and we just moved thirty-eight million. Why is there a difference between the number we moved to the town warrant and the number you have listed there?
That number is from the twenty-two, twenty-three budget that was, that was approved last, last April. That's from last
Twenty-three, twenty-four default budget is from when? From the twenty-two, twenty-three budget?
To get to the, the default budget number, you start with the number on last year's warrant that was approved. The operating budget number that was approved.
All right, thank you.
That's why there's a difference. So basically, the default budget freezes the budget at the previous year's level except for amounts which the town is legally obligated to pay or which were one-time expenditures. So, to kind of go through the mechanics of uh, how you arrive at the numbers, what you, where you start uh, with is, is the number from the prior year's warrant. That would be Article Four of last year's warrant, which was the operating budget article uh, of thirty-six million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty. Uh, to that number, you make adjustments um, for things like collective bargaining agreements. Now, you'll note that um, there was a, a separate warrant article last year on a collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Union. Um, so that was not part, uh, and that was approved by the voters, but that was not part of the operating budget number that was in Article Four. So, the current, the uh, twenty-three, twenty-four um, impact of that collective bargaining agreement needs to be added in to that number to get you kind of to an adjusted starting point of thirty-six million, two sixty-eight, five ninety-nine.
So, if I can interrupt again.
Yeah.
The NEB, NEPBA one twelve and twelve union contracts also had numbers in them for this year, twenty-two, twenty-three. Shouldn't that?
They, they were rolled into the article, Article Four last year of the thirty-six million, two eighteen because they were passed. So, we did not, the only, the only addition, basically, the default budget is you take your operating budget and you add all your additional items. So in our case last year, we had the operating budget of that, and we added the one Teamster contract. Because we, we could add, to make it really complicated, we can add Article Five and Six, which were the capital reserve funds. And then we'd have to take them out on the right-hand side. So we don't do that to, because it would be real confusing. So basically, the default budget is, you take your operating budget, warrant article, that number, add any additions. If there was a contract, say we had a four-year contract for sprinkler system in town hall, that would be added to that number in the year that it, it was approved. The subsequent years, once you get an approved budget, it's in that operating budget number.
And I, I'm seeing my error now. The number under the second column for those two articles is the amount that was approved for that twenty-three, twenty-four year. And therefore, who hadn't been added in yet, and so it's been added in that other column.
To, to add in, to come up with a starting point.
Yeah.
No problem.
Um, so there are some adjustments, uh, as, as we were just discussing, uh, for union contracts that are, that are in effect, but were approved in, in previous years, um, uh, earlier than last year. Uh, the NEPBA one twelve and, and, and twelve contracts. And the, uh, the impact of those as set forth in the warrant for the twenty-three, twenty-four year, are those amounts stated there? Eighteen thousand for uh, NEPBA twelve, one twelve and a hundred and thirty-three thousand for um, the, the police union, NEPBA twelve.
And, and I see a couple of confused faces. The reason why those numbers for eighteen and one thirty-three, that's additional cost from the twenty-two, twenty-three. So those were additional costs. When we write, when we talked about the IAFF that I showed you the three years, that would be, those are the additional costs for those years from the prior year, pursuing years. So that's why they're there on this, like, like that.
And then we've got the twenty-three, twenty-four effect of the Teamsters uh, agreement from last year's warrant of thirty-five thousand. Um, in addition, because uh, the union contracts are, are legally binding and under those contracts, contracts were required to provide health insurance. Um, were required to contribute to uh, the New Hampshire retirement system for those union employees. Were retired to have workers' comp insurance for those uh, union employees. We, we are able to make adjustments. Some of them are positive, some of them are negative, uh, depending on what's going on with the, with those rates in those contracts. Um, but for our, our uh, union employees only. So the hundred and ninety thousand of additional health insurance is uh, the, the increase in the health insurance related to uh, union employees. Um, similarly, the uh, NHRS uh, decrease uh, is, is related to the union employees. That's basically offsets the health insurance increase of a hundred and ninety thousand. Um, and then workers' comp rates uh, have declined across the board. Um, so we've got to reflect the impact of those uh, in the current year for the union employees.
So some of the warrants that we're moving today are like the IAFF contract, the one for Ashmead, and the changes in the budget resulting from those contracts. But yet, we move them to the warrant. What if they get voted down? We still are legally binding for those, aren't we?
Not the union contract. Their salaries freeze
Okay.
to the Article Four of thirty-six million, two, they're included in that thirty-six million dollar.
So whatever was approved last
Whatever was approved last year, it stays that way.
But begs the question, what happens if they get approved?
They are added. If we're in default, if we're in the default situation, they're, they're separate added to the warrant.
Now part of the default. Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, in addition, if, if you plan to eliminate any positions in the current year budget, you do need to reflect those in the default budget as well. So they, they kind of catch you, catch you coming or going. They're, yep, they, they get you either way. So in the current years, uh, operating, in the current year's proposed operating budget, uh, we had eliminated a position in the police department for a detective secretary. Um, and we had uh, eliminated the funding for one of the full-time positions in the town clerk tax collector's uh, department. And uh, and those impacts, uh, which are, are salaries and benefits are seventy-one thousand for the uh, police detective secretary. are 71,000 for the Police Detective Secretary and 64,000 for the Account Clerk in the, in the Tax Collector's Office. In addition, as per the statute, you need to eliminate one-time capital expenses that were in the prior year's operating budget. So that starting point of the, the 36 million included some one-time capital improvements. Specifically, they were the 800 megahertz system is the, is the biggest one. The cabin roof repairs or replacements at Wasserman Park is in there. There was a base radio unit for, for the dispatch department. And there was the file, the, the file cabinet for the Community Development Department. Are the, the four items that were, that are being deducted here because they are not, not recurring items. So we have to take them out. And then there's an adjustment for debt service. Basically, you gotta put in your current year debt service and take out the prior year. In our case, that results in a, in a further decline in the default budget because our debt service is, is going down this year because we have one less bond outstanding. So the impact of, of all of that gives you a default budget appropriation number of 35,300,821. And carrying that forward, if you then take your adjusted revenue numbers, which are basically the revenue numbers from our proposed 2324 operating budget, less the use of fund balance. Because that's kind of gets taken off the table if you're in a, a default budget situation. So you take those adjusted revenues out of the, or subtract those from the default appropriations, include your tax overlay and your veterans exemptions, gets you down to your property tax levy divided by the current year valuation, leaves you with a default property tax rate of $3.42, which compares to the proposed tax rate for just the operating budget in the, in the proposed budget of $3.64. So you're talking about a difference of 22 cents on the tax rate. So that is kind of a quick recap. You can see the comparison down at the bottom there of the proposed operating budget appropriations. And that's the 38 million that you guys moved to the warrant versus the default budget calculation of 35 million, a difference of, of three and a half million dollars. So if there are any further questions.
And it's up to us, all of us, to educate the public that in the difference of 3.4 million dollars, 1.4 million dollars is the gas station. 800,000 dollars was additional paving. So just in two items, that's 2.2 of the 3.4. And I have a whole list of other items. Union in there, you know, there, there's a bunch of other things, non-union raises that we talked about of 186,000. So it's up to us to educate people why there's such a large number like we had to do in years past. But that is, that's the reason why. It's, it's not that we're over appropriating, it's the way default is set up. Is some of these items that you do, some of the bigger items you do, really jack your, your, your tax rate, you know, your appropriation up, not your tax rate up, but your appropriation up that are offset by revenue. The 1.4 is offset by fund balance. The 800,000 dollars for paving is offset by a safer grant, basically. But that's the education stuff that we need, that we need to work on and, and, and move forward. And we will explain that in the Voters Guide as well.
Any, any questions?
Any other questions? And what happens if we move the fuel stations?
We pray that we get through another year, honestly. And if not, then we're gonna have to go to what they call a rack rate. And what you see out here at the gas stations when they up and up their, their price per gallon and decrease their price per gallon, that's based on projection of a rack rate. So we'd be on a rack rate if our, our system failed. We couldn't use our gas pumps that we have in there. Either that or we'd have to go and go to the state refueling center here, which is over by Elbit Systems, which is out of, it's in town, but it's out of our way. There aren't many vehicles that drive that way. You know, maybe a fire truck if it's going out of town or an ambulance if it's going out of town or somebody going over wastewater, but a lot, or a police vehicle doing a, a sector over that way. But a lot of DPW vehicles don't go that far in the highway division. So we'd have to go there and, and see if they let us go on their, their fuel pumps if we don't do that. If it fails and this doesn't, if we go to default budget and it fails.
This is the point I'm trying to hit, that it would cost us more if we charged.
Yes.
Invest in fuel.
Yes, 100%, 100%. No. It's definitely a, a longer than a this year investment. Most tanks last at least 30, or are guaranteed for at least 30 years. I see, I see, I see Mr. Counselor Koenig doing the presentation about the budget.
This particular. Okay. I hear, so yeah.
Yeah.
We might volunteer him, since he's not here, we might volunteer him for some others.
They're, they're on the, on that sheet that was handed out earlier. The number for the default budget is 35,308,21. Right. That's the number, not the number that's printed on that sheet. The number is 35,308,21. So if somebody would like to.
I would like to make a motion on that corrective amount. Move it to the town warrant.
I move the default budget of 35,308,21 to the town warrant.
Any none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And just for public certification, this number now goes literally on the ballot. This cannot be adjusted at town meeting. This is the number going forward. This is the, the official default budget that will go on the town ballot. And, and really what I'm saying that for is I'm saying that for the new residents of Merrimack and the people at home because that number cannot be changed.
Okay, now we're getting there. Review of the 23 town warrant. Now, this is where you have to be caught up with my reading, unfortunately.
You're gonna read all that?
Do I have to read this first part to the state of New Hampshire? Well, I'll give Paul a second.
No.
I don't have to read this stuff. Do I have to read to the state of New Hampshire page? To the inhabitants?
Really, that is, that is something.
I'm sorry. It's up to the council what they want to do. They can vote to just recommend Article 2 and then move to deliberative session and.
But I mean, this introductory page, do I need to read that?
I'm, I'm getting there.
I'm sorry, I missed something.
Sorry. You can, they can vote to just have that put into the minutes as being read. But skip you reading them if that's what you want to do. If the council wants to do that. Or you can read the whole warrant. But the really, it's, you're trying, the part of this agenda item is to put the recommendations on the warrant and move it to deliberative session for further vote.
So are you talking the, all the warrants? Or just because, just to be able to have, we need to be able to take some votes on the articles in terms of recommendations. So we do have to deal with a lot of the articles individually.
Right. You would still individualize each article. It's the, you would suspend the reading and just include in the minutes.
I'm okay if people want to suspend the reading. I'm also okay if they want to be read.
I'm okay with you suspending the reading.
Oh, that sounds good. Could we, we need a vote on that?
Yes.
Would you like to make that as a vote, Counselor Koenig?
I move that we, move the wording of the warrant articles to the, to the warrant as printed.
Ah, thank you. And second by Lon Woods. If I had known that, I wouldn't have ached over this having to read it. I was just thinking, oh my God. Okay. Motion made by Tom Koenig, seconded by Lawrence, Lawrence Lon Woods. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And see, now you know it's good that I didn't read it. I can't read to this. Okay, 600. Excellent. So now we'll just go through each warrant and do the recommendations.
Yes, right.
Ah, nice. Okay, Article 1 is obviously the town officers. And just for the public to know, there are going to be two town councillors, three-year term, two library trustees, trustees for a three-year term, two ethics committee members for a three-year term, and one trustee of the trust funds for a three-year term. Okay, Article 2 has to do with the operating budget. And we need to make a vote on.
I most to recommend Article 2 operating budget and to move Article 2 to the deliberative session.
And that's made by Tom Koenig, seconded by Barbara Healy. And this vote will be what we recommend, right? Is that what you're saying?
Tom combined.
Put them together, so yeah.
So to make it.
Perfect.
To get out of here a little quicker.
Ah, we're gonna get out of here before 10. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So that's 600. Article 3 has to do with the appropriation for the Capital Reserve Expendable Trust Funds.
Move to recommend Article 3, the general fund capital reserve funds to, and then to move Article 3 to the deliberative session.
Motion made by Tom Koenig, seconded by Barbara Healy. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? 600. Article 4 has to do with the Sewer Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund.
Move to recommend Article 4 wastewater CRF to move Article 4 to the deliberative session.
Not so easy, is it? Okay, motion made by Barbara Healy. Seconded by Lon Woods. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. 600. Article 5 has to do with the cost of the collective bargaining unit for IAFF local 2904. Motion made by, go ahead, Nancy.
I'd like to move to recommend Article 5 IAFF contract and move Article 3 to deliberative session.
Article 4.
Oops, what?
Article 5.
Yep.
Didn't I say that?
It's a good thing we're making this shorter.
It's late, oh yeah, 9:30. Go on, just do it again.
Second, did you get a second for that?
No, just repeat it correctly. Go ahead.
We're gonna move to recommend Article 5 IAFF contract and move Article 3, oh, Article 5. Why do I get all the mistypes? To deliberative session.
Second, motion read by Nancy Murphy, seconded by Tom Koenig. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 600. And that's, yep, Article 6 has to do with the Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, 91, Local 3657.
Move to recommend Article 6 collective bargaining agreement with American Federal and State, County, and Municipal Employees, 93, Local 3657, and move Article 6 to the deliberative session.
Second.
Motion made by Andy Hunter, seconded by Lon Woods. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
600. Article 7 is the collective bargaining agreement between, with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Employees 93, Local 2986.
Go for it. Go for it.
Turn it on. There you go.
I move, move to recommend Article 7, AFSCME 2986 to the recommended and move the article to deliberative session.
Second.
Motion made by Lon Woods, seconded by Nancy Murphy. All those in favor, say aye.
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 600. And that is it.
Yes, so we have our recommendations and motions. We'll be getting in touch with you to sign the state form MS 636, which is posted with the warrant. So we'll be getting in touch with you to come in over the weekend and sign that. I don't believe we have that one. We don't have that one. We have to wait for the approvals and then we'll get it out to you. The other thing is, is on the March 9th agenda, which is our two meetings from now, just think about which articles you want to talk about in deliberative session. Because we're gonna be going over all that.
Make a decision.
We're gonna be going over that. So think about which ones you want to move and, and second for that meeting.
Perfect. Perfect.
The chairman's gonna do the budget.
Correct. Whether he wants to or not. But he always does, yeah. Okay, minutes. We have two council meetings and three budget meetings. Now, Tom made a comment earlier. And I think I remember the same thing. The budget meetings were always identified as town council budget meetings, minutes. They're not now. Does it make a difference?
We could make that change. We have a new minute keeper.
Okay.
So she probably just.
So there's no need then?
She has, she has a, a template and she probably just.
I understand, sure. So for town, the January 12th meeting minutes is, was in fact a true town council meeting.
Right.
So we don't have to worry about that one. Okay, motion?
Move, move the January 12th minutes with changes.
Motion made by Tom Koenig, seconded by.
Second.
Andy Hunter, changes?
On page 2, line 45, talks about a municipal engineering frim, which should be a firm.
Maybe it was a firm.
And on page 10, it talks about Chairman Koenig abstaining, but I'm not chairman. On line 7. I'm a counselor.
Any other corrections? Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve and it would be with corrections, right? Tom Koenig and.
Somebody seconded.
Andy, Andy Hunter. Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
600. Oops, 60501. And that's Barbara Healy abstaining. That's right, because you were not there. Okay. Now, the meeting for January 18th was a budget meeting. So that should be changed at the very top, town budget meeting. Right.
It's correct in the footer.
Right. What's the?
I'll move the minutes of January 18th as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Tom Koenig, seconded by Barbara Healy. Any changes, Barbara?
On page 2, line 22, sand, salt and sand budget has been lowered for the next year in anticipation of their mag working?
Yeah, that's.
Mag. It's not ringing any bells for me.
Mag is a additive to the sand and salt. They put the mag on, you put a, the mag on it, magnesium, put magnesium on it when it hits the ground, it, you don't have to use as much because it starts the chemical reaction.
Do we know if it stands for magnesium?
I'll double check. I'll, I'll. I'll figure out what it is. But 99.9%, that's magnesium. But Lori did say mag.
Yeah, probably did. 22. Anything else, Bob? So with the potential correction, how's that? Anything else, anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes with that potential correction, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was, everybody was here, 600. January 19th was also a council meeting, so that the heading, I'm sorry, budget meeting. So the heading should say Town Council Budget Meeting Minutes.
Move the minutes of January 19th. Second.
Motion made by Andy Hunter, seconded by Lon Woods. Corrections, Barbara?
Yeah, on page two, starting about line 40, the title is Summer Day Camp. But the following is when Mr. Casvarius was talking about adding the new after-school program and how he was going to have a position that had shared responsibility for them daycare, I mean, the summer camp. Do we want that broken out as a separate topic under Summer Day Camp?
Actually, if you're gonna break it out, it should say revolving fund. Should be what? Revolving fund. Oh, because that's what really it is. The day camp is underneath the revolving fund. And that's really what he was talking about. He was talking about revolving fund and this new program that he was going to implement.
But he does start the discussion of the new program on line 30.
It's still part of the revolving fund.
Yeah, so I think that's the place where the new subtitle has to be, maybe.
So are you suggesting, oh, that instead of Summer Day Camp, it should be highlighted as revolving fund?
Really, it's the revolving fund because it's all, it's Summer Day Camp, it's the track. It's this new program he's putting in, and that's all in the revolving fund.
Is that okay with you, Barbara?
Yes, as long as it's put in between line 32 and 33. Because on line 33, it says he's discussing a new program they are looking to launch under the revolving fund.
Okay, so on line 33, it'd be revolving fund and Summer Day Camp should be amended.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Did you get that done? Anything else, Bob? Any other corrections? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes with the corrections, please say aye.
Aye.
600. Okay, January 25th. Also a budget meeting, so it should say Town Council Budget Meeting Minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of January 25th, 2023.
Second. Who said second? Nancy, okay. Motion made by Andy Hunter, seconded by Nancy Murphy. Changes, Tom?
On line 20 of page one, it talks about, he talked with Jonathan Diaz in media about Office 365, I think Jonathan's in information technology or something like that.
So what is the information?
In IT.
IT. Information technology.
Just not media, so. That's all I had.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move the, what are the minutes as corrected? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
600. Okay, January 26th was a regular town council meeting.
I move January 26th town council meeting minutes as presented.
Motion made by Lon Woods, seconded by Barbara Healy. Corrections, Tom?
On page two, line 32, there's a whole bunch of bullets under the Seegan River pedestrian trail, but that last bullet is actually an engineering study of wire road. Should be pulled out as a separate item. So just shift it to the left to make it another bullet.
Gotcha. So it's a solid bullet, not?
Right, instead of a sub-bullet.
And the other?
No, that was it.
Barbara?
On line 47, Merrimack, yep, same page, page two. Merrimack High School, high school should be capitalized.
Yep.
On page four, line 43, seconded by Counselor Healy, to accept.
Yeah.
And the same over on page five, line eight, Counselor Murphy, to accept.
Yep.
And on line 25, Counselor Hunter, to accept. And I'm done.
Any others? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes with corrections, say aye.
Aye.
600. Not bad, guys, not bad. Okay. Comments from the press, comments from the public, comments from the council. We're gonna be, is it next week we have a meeting as well?
Yeah.
Said with such glee.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for making it a very successful evening as well. Went quickly and expeditiously, let's put it that way. Okay.
If the chair's ready.
Chair's ready.
We move, we adjourn.
Second.
Ooh, it's echoing here. Lon Woods, seconded by Barbara Healy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.